Thank you everyone for coming. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is June the 11th, 2025. The time is seven o'clock. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hondro.
President.
Commissioner Orvez.
Here.
Commissioner Paschukka.
Here.
Commissioner Lozini.
Here.
Commissioner Schre.
Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll begin the meeting, Item Four, with public comment. This is for agenda items only. Anyone wishing to make any public comment, please note that this meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone that would like to comment? We'll move to Item Five, Correspondence. South Att Library report?
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'm happy to give them. I just want to draw your attention to the phone. I just want to draw your attention to, we got the notice for the extension of the Keystone Grant. We're gonna put the, we're gonna submit the letter by the end of the month and then we'll wait to hear back.
Okay, that was actually one of the question I had. Has the grant extension been submitted?
It is not yet. I'm waiting on budget numbers and then hopefully.
Yeah, I saw that in your notes. That's what probably you asked the question. Cool. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ben.
Ben, do you think you have what you need based on latest information I shared with you?
They are supposed to get me, unless you say email me this, like since four o'clock. The consultants are gonna provide the budget numbers for the library component specifically.
Oh my, okay, I got you.
That's the last thing I'm waiting.
Okay, alright, perfect. Thanks.
Oak Ridge Volunteer Fire Department, anything in there, Joan?
Just stats for the month.
Yep.
No, nothing to report there.
Alright, we'll move forward. Dan Miller, South Bridge, anything? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Item D, Thank You Letter Regarding Donation for Minithon.
Just, you know, some stats on the cause we were contributors of it. Thought you guys would like to see what they sent out with the photo.
Okay. Move on to Item Six, Consent for Calendar Items. Item A, Approval of the Minutes. Can I please have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, Payment of Bills. Is there anything there you wanna review?
Just maybe a couple of things to point out. There is, there is a large expense on there to McCrally Houston. They're an electrical contractor. This is eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight bucks. These were expenses incurred after the fire that we had in the building. So these are monies that should be reimbursed from the charge. So I know there, if you look at the, you know, kind of line item that corresponds with these expenses, way over budget because of these things, both for the electrical work as well as the remediation, the cleaning, restoration, we should be seeing that brought back down when we're reimbursed. But right now, it looks a little out of whack.
And these are unpaid, so that'll be paid this month coming up.
Correct.
In June.
Yep.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to pay our bills?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Financial reports.
Just a few things to point out. If we look at the budget to actuals, end of, end of May was a deadline for tax emissions. So you'll see a real spike on the real estate tax. I think at the end of April, we said at about 1.5 million. You can see this month that real estate tax is up to about 8.3. So we've got about 6.8 million in real estate tax, which is great. Turns us, keeps us positive for the year. If you look at just expenses to date versus that revenue, we're to the good, 5.4 million. So finally good to be caught up and back on track. So just wanted to point that out.
Would anyone like to, please make a motion to accept the financial reports?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
D, Bank Account Balances.
The account balances, as of the end of the month, kind of reflect what I said about the real estate tax. You'll notice General Fund has a ledger balance of 6.2 million. So getting those back up to speed, our capital projects are gonna start coming out of there soon. So it's good to see that it's healthy.
Okay. Any questions on bank accounts?
No.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept those?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item Seven, Liaison Reports. First in the well with Public Safety. We had the monthly South Att Fire Advisory Committee meeting, it was just last week or, yeah, probably last week. Making good progress on the fire administrator role. We have some feelers out to some neighboring communities that have fire administrators to take a look at their job descriptions. They're also planning for the rollout of the first two software, which will replace their current emergency reporting. And then the Monday before that was Monday, right, Dan? We had, three of our four fire departments did some training on a, is it P-500 or F-500 additive to help more quickly extinguish fires. So that's what I have from a public safety standpoint. Becky, do you have anything for public infrastructure?
No, I don't want to report.
Leanne, anything with finance?
I wasn't able to attend the meeting for Sheikog last month, however, just following the emails and conversations there. They are pretty close to finalizing the bylaws that haven't been updated in what, almost 20 years or something like that? So I went through the changes last month. The next meeting's tomorrow, so I'll be in attendance there. But otherwise, no other major developments.
Okay. Tim?
No, I'll have a more report next month after our meeting with the school board tomorrow.
Good. Mark, Community and Economic Development?
Sure, just have a couple of things. First thing is, there's some changes that had to be made to a permit or had to be slash re-permitted for Bass Pro in the Wembley Center that was gonna go down, or actually is gonna go down down in Newbury. That should hopefully take place in July and August. So we'll see where that goes. But it's moving ahead and talking with the main developer there. And then secondly, I've had a couple of meetings on the rehabilitation of the old township building. So we had the first drawings in and moving forward with that. So it's gonna be really exciting. About a 15,000 square foot building, so exciting. That's it. Thank you.
Item Eight, Old or Unfinished Business, anything?
Nothing for me, no.
Alright, Item Nine, New Business. Nine A, Discuss and Consider Fifth and Final Payment for Millian Millie and Sons Incorporated for the 2024 paving program in the amount of $212,000, $219.14, leaving a zero balance.
Yeah, this closes their contract out. This is last year's program. We carried over paving of the DPW site below Fairview Park facing Mayview Road. So that work was completed. It was in last year's program, but the site wasn't ready for the paving before the end of the season. So they carried their pricing forward. This is everything, including retainage. I know that Travis, you guys kind of closed them out. Everything was verified and were good to go. Yeah, so just looking for approval for the final payment.
Okay, very good. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the fifth and final payment?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item Nine B, Discuss and Consider Pay Estimate Number Two to John Kosky Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $159,645.38 for the Mohawk Road project. And that looks like it's pretty close to being done, right?
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah, Travis, you have an idea of when that should be completed?
They're supposed to start the guide rail next week. They just have that. They have line striping, some signage to put up. And then they have to move some, Verizon has to move some lines on the pole down by Battle Ridge to, that's probably gonna be the longest hang-up at this point.
So probably by the end of the month?
Hopefully.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion to pay that final balance, 159,000?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, this is actually payment number two, not the final one. I didn't want to misspeak.
Correct.
Alright, Becky, you're making the motion. Someone will second it?
I'll second.
Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Item Nine C, Discuss and Consider Pay Estimate Number One to Shields Asphalt Paving in the amount of $920,769.36 for the 2025 paving program. So this is the first of however many payments we're gonna make for the total.
Probably not too many more. Those guys were in and out. I mean, since we met last, they mobilized, finished paving and are.
Yeah, I mean, this is 920 of 1.4 million, right?
Right, we had, the contract amount was reduced due to some of the gas companies work in the area that came off of it. So that, that little chunk on Hickory grade, if you came up or down that way, you probably noticed there's some of the old road. The utility be responsible for paving and restoring that area, so that reduced our unit cost. Same can be said for Miller's Run Extension with gas company work. So that, that's gonna bring, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that should bring that 1.5 down significantly, I would think.
Yeah, they're probably not gonna exceed a million, so.
Okay.
So wait, sorry. So then if they're not gonna exceed a million and we're paying, the proposal is to pay 920 of that?
Well, that's for work completed. They still have restoration to do and we'll get, we'll get more bills for, you know.
You're saying the restoration is gonna be another 80,000, right? We will not exceed that.
Yeah.
Alright, so this is equivalent to what you're asking to pay is equivalent to the work they've already done.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's only for the work they've done.
Got it, okay.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
For payment number one. Leanne, anyone want a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Item Nine D, Discuss and Consider Change Order Number One from Field Turf USA in the amount of $375,777.29 for the Fairview Park Baseball Field Project. So I read this before, I guess, right in that description box. Is that the, just wanted to get a ballpark as far as what are these changes?
We did ask them to itemize this, so we do have an itemized list that makes up that 375. It does require some explanation because it's a little unique. This project, to begin with, was not, we didn't ask the engineer to produce bid specs and to bid the project. This Field Turf is a Co-Stars vendor.
Yep.
And they're also authorized to install their product. So the overwhelming majority of this project is the installation of the turf. There's very little grading. So at the time, we accepted a proposal from them. We had, I mean, it was a site plan, but it wasn't necessarily very detailed from HRG. Gibson Thomas transitioned that project, kind of calculated the stormwater. There is some drainage that needs to be included. We also wanted to include, while we're still waiting for electricity to formally be brought to the site, we wanted to include the conduit in this phase, so we didn't have to dig anything back up for lighting. So those, the contractor approached us and said, hey, you know, we didn't realize how much stormwater work was needed. We didn't realize X, Y, and Z. These, and they gave us a number. Originally, it was about, I want to say 550,000 of additional expenses. We asked them to put that in the form of a change order. We called them into a meeting. All of us kind of teamed up and talked through it with them. We got the number down to the 375 that you see today. We pulled landscaping out because it seemed to be very high. They reduced maybe a couple of other numbers, but the, the electric conduit and the, the additional stormwater stuff largely make up what we're seeing as that, that $375,000 increase.
How far along is the project?
I mean, they still, they still, or field H, almost done, but there's one grading, not two grading.
Would you guys mind hitting your mics? I'm sorry. We can hear you, just we want to be able to get it on the camera afterwards. Yeah, there you go. You don't have to talk right. You're good. Thank you.
One of the field closest to Dog Park is up to grade right now. Middle field getting graded. A storm sewer has been installed and a contractor is running into shortage of fill, fill material for a field closest to Splash Pad. So, I mean, right now, we are doing pretty good. Storm sewer has been installed for two fields, starting third field and then electrical work. It's a, I talked to Lance this morning. It's about one, one month, at least one month out before the electrical conduit be installed.
We're not gonna get a change order next month again, will we?
Well, we're still.
Nothing this significant, but there might be. I mean, they did, they hit some foundation and some, some buildings when they were putting in the, the, the stormwater stuff, but it wasn't more than, you know.
They are running into, yeah, an existing underground foundation walls and footers. What they, according to their email, they're trying to compute and provide us via email. I don't wanna use a TNM for it, but we will look into their proposal. There is a rock excavation can be, can be used, a line item under contract, so.
I mean, we really aren't much of a choice but to pay it, I mean, at this point, but the thing is, you have a change order.
But I need to understand though.
16% of the total cost of the project.
So I, I guess I need to understand because typically when I see a project like this, I'm expecting it's gonna be more of a fixed fee and we've kind of done our work to vet what the requirements are. And I can understand, okay, maybe you want to move in the electrical scope now to avoid having to dig it up later. But I personally, I, it's still not clear to me, like, where were we at before? I know you spoke about it, but what was removed? What is being added back in? Does it make sense? I don't know if Gibson, you know, Travis has had, have you had a chance to look at this? Like, I personally don't have enough information at this point to be able to say, yes, this makes sense. And to Chuck's point, I don't want to see another change order next, next month. So how, I guess for me, from a contract perspective, how do we make sure we dial in the costs and make sure it's more of in line with, with the budget?
Well, Travis, why don't you jump in and just maybe discuss how you guys have helped us review and analyze this?
Yeah, so, so from like a timing standpoint, I know whenever the original Co-Stars number was received by the township, the plans weren't complete. So the stormwater, as John kind of alluded to, the stormwater design wasn't fully complete and the price that they provided to the township was based upon those incomplete plans. So after we had kind of taken over the project and started looking at it, the permit was not received at that point to do the project. So we had to put everything together for the permit and that included additional stormwater management, larger tanks, more pipe, more stone, like that kind of stuff. So that, between that and the electrical, you know, the electrical is kind of like a side item that wasn't, I guess, considered whenever they gave us the original price. And it's one of those things, it's like, well.
Is it ours or is it theirs?
I'll turn it on if you don't mind. We were having difficulties with West Penn Power and couldn't get answers. So we need to move the project along. We knew that there were a change order would come. We needed to get the permit. We need to get it moving. So we knew, it was because we just didn't hear anything from West Penn Power is the reason for that. And the stormwater was kind of, a lot of those requirements came from the county level, too. Requirements from the county.
So what's our, so what's our total budget then? So what is our all-in now that we have this? Like, what is the actual budget for this project? Does anybody know?
2.72. Right here, 2.72.
And we have a total of 1, 1.6 million in grants.
But I mean from our, so I see the 2.7, which that's the cost from whatever the company.
There's no other contractors. There's no other, the only other cost that possibly could, we're gonna have is like for bleachers, garbage cans, like minor costs like that. This is an all-in project. This includes fencing, the fields, the turf, the, scoreboards are not included, but the sidewalks, the stormwater, it's the whole package deal.
And we do have construction oversight from Gibson Thomas that will, to your point of how do we make sure this doesn't happen again? We do have people on site that are there monitoring it. When they, when they did have situations where they encountered foundation or rock, both Vitale and Gibson Thomas came out, gave them like kind of field advice. And then we're also, you know, using unit costs provided in their proposal. Make sure that they're, they're charging us those numbers and not, you know, not adding them without, without foundation.
So refresh my memory again. What is our, the township's budget? Not this, right? That we're seeing here. It's the 2.7. I get that that's the quote from them. But what was our budget coming into this year for this project?
I believe 2.4.
Yeah.
Okay.
322. Yeah, I, yeah, go ahead. I have a question.
If it was 2 points, that's what I'm asking, right? So, and I, I know that also includes like the, the grant that, that we got. So I guess for me, I would like to understand if it was 2.4, we're already over, right? 322. So I would also want to understand what will we do to make sure that we keep other things in budget to make up for this? Right?
Yeah, I mean, outside of the, we do have, you know, those final drawings now and we do have construction oversight. So, you know, it should follow that path right now. We do have, you know, kind of guardrails in place to make sure they, they stay within those, those plans. That's really the best we can do at this point.
Are any of these Co-Star agreements or contracts with this contractor, do they have an NTE clause?
Do they have what?
Not to exceed?
They do not. They have, you know, kind of rates for material or hourly rates for labor.
Like cost plus.
Yeah.
Is that something legally we could consider looking at in future agreements?
Definitely. Yeah. I always, I, I always recommend a not to exceed in this kind of situation when you had, you know, I understand having to move the project forward and having some things fuzzy, but then on the back end, you can protect yourself a little.
And I get it. I mean, stuff happens, right? I mean, you don't know when you start digging what you're gonna hit, right? But, I mean, 16% of the cost.
Also, we, we had a meeting today with a Penn Power and Gibson told an electrical engineer, there is an opportunity of value engineering related to electrical, just to cut them, to save the money on the electrical installation that also, something to, something to consider. Potential could be 30 to 50,000 in savings. We're gonna reroute and.
It helps.
Yeah, so we're working on it. I provided an email.
Can we table this maybe until they have a chance to do the?
Well, I think we have to consider paying it. I mean, if you table it, then you're gonna push the project back again.
Yeah, they haven't performed this work, but it is, it is, you know, I know the, the electrical work is pushed out a few weeks. The stormwater stuff, I, you know, it's right in front of us right now, so.
I'm, I'm asking so that Vitale has a chance to do, 50 grand is 50 grand, right? Maybe just to see what else we can do?
What we could do is have this change order be a not to exceed amount and then, you know, we'll, we'll work as hard as we can to, to reduce those numbers. Go through the value engineering process further, try to get that electric number down and, you know, use this, this change order amount as like a not to exceed amount. If you guys are good with that.
Travis, I have a question. So when Field Turf, they provided the cost, it was based on preliminary drawings?
Yeah, that, that was before we were involved, but that is correct, yes.
Okay. Then they went in, they start digging stuff up, doing the stormwater, and then they said, oh, we, this, we gotta do this to remediate it and make, make it.
It was based on the drawings that were submitted for the NPDS permit. And then throughout the process, the Conservation District kept requiring additional stormwater to their standards. And that's where the, the changes came from.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Yep, is what it is.
Is what it is. I, I do have a question though, because if I remember this time last year, it was, West Penn Power was delayed like a year. Now, is this price also include lights for nighttime? So that's totally separate. Okay.
I'll be budgeting. Yeah, I'll be budgeting for that. It's the conduit and I'll be budgeting in 2026.
2026 for the lights, okay. Because I think that's right important to have ball fields of lights.
Correct.
Eventually.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what brought the change order for the electrical.
For electrical is the, is the conduit.
If you do it now, because they're, they're integral to the project. So if you don't do it now, you're gonna be digging up your turf and everything else later to.
So I guess in a positive network, it's costing us more now, but we're probably saving money down the road by actually having the conduit in?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, makes me feel.
And we tried to push, push West Penn to give us answers last year and we could not get answers. So we, we kind of knew on the back end, a change order of some sort would come for the conduit. We just didn't know what it was gonna be.
So my last question.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So my last question, so under, so next year, so for next year's budget will be the scoreboard, the lights and all the?
The physical poles, physical, the poles of the lights, scoreboard and running of the electrical line. Yeah. Yeah, and whatever, West Penn, we still don't have a cost from West Penn to run the power up the hill. And that's what we're still waiting. We met with them today. Correct, correct. But that's for next year.
Right, but we do have them at the table now. We've seen.
Finally.
You know, that was, that was no small task.
Because it's been 20 months.
Yeah.
That's always, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, we can do a roll call if you guys want to do a roll call. First, I would need a motion. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve payment of $375,777.29 for the Fairview Park Baseball Field?
I'll make the motion.
Does anyone want to second it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We'll do a roll call? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Arianna?
Commissioner Hondro?
Wait, here?
Yes, if you want to pay, no, you don't.
Yes, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, that's why I approved it.
Commissioner Orvez?
I've never done this before. Roll call in.
I approve under the condition that we make sure we do what we said, which was to add the not to exceed moving forward. To make abundantly clear.
We could amend the motion to, to, we would, I guess, this one, the motion's been made on this one, so this motion would have to fail. It'd be rescinded, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
And then we would have to restate, do a motion to amend the motion, the way she's saying, and then approve that. And then you would vote on the substantive part of it.
Which she said.
So specifically, what do you want the motion to say?
So I, I would like the motion to say, yes, we can approve the change order for the $375,777.29 while also ensuring that we are adding language to this change order that it is a not to exceed amount.
But what would that amount be?
I would say the 375, 777, 29.
And make sure that it's, this change order is covering all of the costs here so that the contractor is not coming back and saying, oh, well, we forgot this for electrical or, oh, we forgot that. And also, if we can please make sure Vitale does the reverse engineering to see if even we can shave 50,000. I would like those things to happen first before we approve this.
For sure.
However you want to write that up.
Is that possible?
So how do I undo the motion before?
Just do, yeah, just do a motion to rescind.
Can I have a, can I have a motion to rescind nine D, the original wording as in the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second to rescind the original wording on nine D as per the agenda?
Second.
Okay. Now, what I'd like to do.
Oh, and then vote.
Alright, everyone vote. All in favor? Alright. Now, I'm gonna read this and, and Ms. Lawyer Lady, you tell me if I'm okay. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna ask for a motion, Discuss and Consider Change Order Number One from Field Turf USA in the amount of $377, $375,777.29 for the Fairview Park Baseball Field Project, conditional based on a not to exceed of $375,777.29. Okay?
That's good.
And the reverse engineering.
Now you keep adding.
He's gonna do the language, right?
And subject to the reverse engineering.
Right.
The value engineering. Value engineering.
Yeah, we're not doing other baseball games. Okay. I'm just gonna read this once and then I'm gonna ask for a motion. Would someone please like to make a motion to approve, right, we've already discussed and. Would someone please like to make a motion to approve, right, we've already discussed and considered.
You're amending first before you approve.
Right, oh, that's right. So this is for the amend.
Amend then, we're gonna do it. So I would like to have an amendment, uh approval to amend nine D to read. Discuss and consider change order number one from Field Turf USA Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents for the Fairview Park Baseball Field Project conditional based on a not to exceed of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, seven, seventy-seven, twenty-nine, and subject to value engineering. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that pass now?
So that, now the motion's amended. Now you need another motion.
I'm gonna read the same thing and then we're gonna vote on it the same way, right? All right. Item nine D, can I have, can I have a motion, a motion to approve change order number one from Field Turf USA Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents for the Fairview Park Baseball Field Project. Conditional based on a not to exceed of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents and subject to value engineering.
I'll make that motion.
Anyone?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, guys. I know that was difficult, but I appreciate it.
I thought this was gonna be a quick one. Nine E, discuss and consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, accepting transportation alternative set aside program funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Anything to point out here, Paula? This is really just signatory authorization and like enrollment in the program.
Just accept the money.
Eight hundred and two thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine F, discuss and consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, accept grant resolution for people, parks and community. This is a grant for trails through way, through Fairview, a resolution to accept grant money. Would someone like to make a motion to accept item nine F?
It's not to accept, it's to apply.
Okay.
Hopefully we come back with.
I make that motion.
Discuss and consider resolution.
Hopefully, hopefully.
It says accepting grant resolution. Right? Accepting the grant resolution for the PPC grant for trails through Fairview.
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine G, discuss and consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, volunteer firefighter service tax credit. So.
Getting something there, John.
This is something that's been in since twenty twenty, or twenty eighteen. This is, uh, the intent is to aid in the recruitment and retention for volunteer firefighters. There's a tax credit. Um, it's maximum up to three hundred dollars um for property owners and three hundred for an um earned income tax credit. It does have an NTE of six hundred is the original resolution as I understood it. So this is just to continue that resolution. Is that correct?
Uh, we also did get a slate of candidates that, you know, uh met the criteria. Uh, so this would be allowing us to give them that credit. We get, we offer it as kind of a rebate almost. They paid their taxes, now we issue them a refund. Comes about eleven thousand, five hundred bucks, something like that.
Okay. I might question.
I'll second.
So let me ask you this, Christine. Since I am a volunteer firefighter, should I not vote?
I would not vote, just to be on the side.
That's fine. So I'm going to abstain. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No. And you, and just note that. Note that your abstention is.
My abstention is based on the fact that I'm a volunteer firefighter. So, that's why I asked. All right? So nine H, discuss and consider a motion to approve a tax refund for twenty twenty-four taxes in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars for a disabled veteran. And I think this is also, Pat, this is in your report too.
Correct. He's a disabled veteran. He should have been entitled to the tax credit. Um, there was a problem obviously with getting.
The collection of it in the paperwork?
Without going into further detail.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Who seconded?
She seconded.
You did?
Yeah.
Someone?
It's a rough one.
Mark second.
Say, I second.
I, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Item nine I, discuss and consider a motion to approve tax refunds from Kevin Byber. So I read all these, couple of questions I had. It looked like um, these are probably all the result of the common level ratio was my assumption with the county. There were some items on here that were listed multiple times with the same parcel ID.
Multiple years.
Oh, wow.
You can go back, you can go back multiple years and.
Okay, that wasn't clear when I looked at that. That was my assumption because it was on there two or three times.
It's confusing when you look at it at first glance.
Okay. And then the total for this of those multiple years going back is about thirteen thousand, seven eighty-eight. Does that sound right?
Correct.
Okay. Would anyone like to, we've discussed, anyone like to make a motion to approve these tax refunds?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item ten, department reports, manager's report. Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, submitted my report. It's available for you. A few things to, to touch upon. We hosted a um HOA forum here in our building. This uh was, organically came about from HOAs themselves. Um, you know, they, uh, a few members of different communities, I guess, started speaking. Uh, newly elected to boards and had questions just about, you know, management companies and uh stormwater ponds and transitioning uh takeover of roads and whatnot. So I think they, you know, first thought, hey, let's reach out to the township, gotten in touch with Andrea. Andrea shared with, with them a little bit about, you know, uh, we have a, a few resources we offer. We do keep a, you know, kind of a, a directory as best we can. Um, we have some, some information that we share. Um, but they ended up hosting a, a forum here. We had, I want to say almost fifty people here. There was a good, good crowd here that, that night.
There's forty-six HOAs. Does that sound right?
There might be more than that.
There's more than that, I think.
There are about that many neighborhoods, but we don't know how many have HOAs. We did have twenty-three represented at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems high, like forty-six.
Yeah, so I mean, if you think about that, that concentration of HOAs is a good opportunity for us to kind of splinter off into the neighborhoods, right? So um I attended, Andrea attended. We spoke just about how we could cooperate with them, uh, you know, access to services, whatnot. We agreed, hope, hope the board doesn't mind that they could continue to meet in the building on a quarterly basis. Seems like a good location and um, good opportunity to get them all together. So we'll kind of, I know the chief's coming to their next meeting to, you know, talk through some neighborhood safety and aggressive driving types of things. Um, I spoke about the Miller's Run project and, and, you know, Mark, you brought that up, so I won't, I won't belabor that any further. Last month, I shared with you that uh our project for the municipal intern program had begun. I asked our, our intern TJ to, to come tonight, introduce himself to you guys and maybe just share with you a little bit about the, uh, the project that, that he started for us. Um, TJ, you want to come forward? You got to hear a lot about uh change orders and some, some Robert's Rules of Orders parliamentary procedure. So yeah, this is, this is great.
Are you gonna go over, yeah, your, the PowerPoint you got?
Yep.
Yeah. I looked at it.
So, uh, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to foremost thank uh Mr. Barrett for affording me the opportunity to present my findings so far. And I uh promised to be uh brief on this sort of report on the correlation between neighborhood density and uh township revenue.
Hey TJ, is your little red light on, your mic?
Yeah.
Okay, text.
Uh, I can move closer, of course, so we can progress. So just to provide some context, um, I am a third-year undergraduate student at the University of Pittsburgh and I am participating in the local government academy program, interning here for South Fayette Township this summer. Uh, part of my project is examining the trends and revenue between various neighborhoods built under various township ordinances. Uh, primarily the open space design option under the Plan Economic Development District, uh, the Neighborhood Design District and some of the R districts. Uh, these are pretty reflective of variances in density with, of course, you know, the R districts being less dense and the open space option having smaller setbacks in between houses to permit for tracts of land that are for conservation, agricultural purposes or recreation. Uh, then using these sort of averages, we can sort of extrapolate them to sort of prospective development along the Southern Beltway region. Uh, if the township were to examine that sort of development, see what, you know, um, that may look like, uh, as that is currently zoned, R1, um, in a segment of it is also PED. So methodology, uh, we sort of examined nine neighborhoods. That is, of course, the Berkshires, Hastings, Hickory Heights, Lafayette Meadows, Newberry, Parks Farms, Pinnacle Point, Stonegate and Walnut Ridge. Uh, these are virtually representative of the township sort of districts with, uh, you know, Newberry, Stonegate, Lafayette Meadows and Walnut Ridge being uh open space design option. Uh, Hastings is, of course, a neighborhood design district and some of the others are in various R districts. Uh, so that was a pretty representative sample. We used the Allegheny County Real Estate Portal as our primary resource and I collected and recorded variables such as district name, house number, taxable market value, uh gross tax due, square footage and a unit class or use class. So, uh, of course, the gross tax due was not actually used as the county portal uh uses Allegheny County's mileage rate, which is six point four three. So I had to make a new variable, um, South Fayette Township Tax, which is used, uh, South Fayette Township's uh mileage rate, five point nine eight. So you take that, multiply it by the taxable market value of each unit, uh, and that produces, you know, the uh expected revenue uh per observation within that data frame. Uh, from there, it was just as simple as taking the averages and totals per neighborhood, as that was the primary sort of results that we were looking and examining. And uh I also examined the uh composition of each neighborhood primarily through a unit class, whether it's a single-family dwelling, a townhouse, a townhouse, condominium, or in the case of Hastings, you see a lot of commercial usage. So as for results, uh, in terms of average township revenue, the neighborhoods of Stonegate, Walnut Ridge, Newberry and Lafayette Meadow uh sort of lead that pack. Um, these are, of course, all built under the open space design option. However, um, I apologize, it's not so coherent here. But under total township revenue, the neighborhood of Hastings and the Berkshires and Newberry uh sort of lead those figures. Um, now, I would like to mention that what makes this sort of study sort of interesting is that these unit counts reflect sort of uh parcels that have been bought and developed. These are homes paying property tax currently. Uh, in the case of Stonegate, the county portal uh lists like about ninety-two units, but of course, we only counted for forty-two. Uh, sort of, so these averages wouldn't be artificially depreciated. Um, and of course, as a result of that, Hastings Phase Four has also been excluded as that is currently being developed. Uh, so we can expect neighborhoods like Stonegate and uh Hastings to only increase in total value.
Quick question. On the previous slide, you had NA. Why were there some NAS?
Yeah, so those are homes or parcels of land that do not pay any tax, whether that is the open space per se and it's just a homeowners association.
Communes.
Oh, they're, it's communes.
Common space, or those could also be underdeveloped parcels or houses that haven't been bought yet, et cetera. So that is the um controlled sort of variable there.
Okay.
Thank you for that question. Um, additionally, for the composition of neighborhoods, um, nothing too shocking as uh we see that a higher unit count is associated with a higher percentage of townhomes. Especially in the case of Hastings, where overwhelmingly that neighborhood is comprised of townhouses. And of course, as a result, they have higher total revenue. I think that is not necessarily a shocking sort of trend there. Uh, what this is sort of evident, however, is that the proportion of uh single-family homes does not necessarily correlate to higher averages as one might expect. Um, the open space design option permits developments that are exclusively single-family dwellings. Um, but in the case of like Pinnacle Point, that neighborhood is all single-family dwellings, but has uh an average that falls below the median in both total and average revenue. So we can progress, yeah. Uh, next steps, I should mention, we are looking at an additional variable, or I should say calculation, and that's sort of, you know, the average value of a neighborhood per acre. Um, this has not yet been completed as, you know, uh, finding the total acreage of these developments is a sort of challenge in and itself, but that should be produced within the oncoming months. But we are working with the township engineers, Gibson Thomas, to sort of estimate developable land along the Southern Beltway region. Currently, we are developing a map that uses slope percentages and referring that back to the township code to see what could be developed um, and what that may look like in terms of uh new square footage added and new dwellings added. And of course, we would like to consistently engage with the South Fayette community, uh, as ultimately residents are impacted by development. And, you know, these are the people who are buying and living in these houses, you know, they should be the primary stake, stakeholder. Um, if they do not necessarily hold a favorable disposition towards uh denser developments.
Would this data give, would this data eventually give you the ability to maybe overlay other factors to figure the cost to serve for like police and public works?
Uh, I believe that is all absolutely things that could be sort of, you know, uh, explored in the future. I mean, right now, this is just a pure sort of like revenue.
The data, yeah.
And then from there, we could always, uh, with, you know, help from Mr. Barrett, sort of explore how that could be represented.
Thank you. This is very interesting.
Yeah, one, one thing that's easy to add there along the expense side is the garbage fee, because we have like a per-unit type of number there, so.
Right.
Um, you know, we could certainly include those. Um, on the, on the public work side, we uh provide communities with a, uh, like a winter maintenance fee that we, we have a calculation based upon their lane miles and price of salt that we would charge them if they wanted our services. We might be able to use that same kind of uh formula for these developments, even though we're not charging them. It would give us a value that we could.
Yeah, I'm not saying we would do anything with it. My point would be, it'd be interesting to know, like, the, the spectrum from a more dense neighborhood to a less dense neighborhood that has bigger homes, right? So, and then eventually you look at maybe existing neighborhoods that aren't part of, you know, these newer developments.
Right.
Just to have a understanding of. Thank you very much.
One question. Going back to Pinnacle Point, do we have an understanding as to why, like, other comparable open space developments with similar, you know, makeup that's a hundred percent single-family home, why the revenue is just less? Is it, do we know if it's because of income? Or is it, what, what is the driver there?
Um, so that's a question I have considered a lot, uh, throughout the sort of duration of this project. And currently, I don't know if there is a satisfactory answer that I could provide that could be like statistically or empirically corroborated other than these houses just have a higher property value. Whether that's because the open space sort of provides a green premium, or that's, you know, up for debate. But unfortunately, I can't a hundred percent say with certainty.
That's fair. Thank you.
Yeah, really what we thought, um, one, next step of this might be, we had, you know, talked amongst ourselves about the Southern Beltway and maybe some opportunities that are there. Um, our thinking is if we can identify where the buildable areas are there, you know, there might, this doesn't necessarily be the only factor that we would consider, but at least, you know, if we're thinking about making some changes to zoning, at least having some data behind it that might suggest what we could see, see in return for those might be helpful.
Sure.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks TJ.
That was helpful. Item ten B, Assistant Manager's Report.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, you, obviously you press, you passed Mr. Lee's um tax refund. Mr. Lee will be very happy. I, I've been working with him a while now to get him that because he's been um really trying to get that done with our tax collector and he wasn't able to.
I understand. Does he have the same um program with the county?
Yes.
Yeah, so that kind of makes sense, right?
County tax exempt, obviously, so it shouldn't have been an issue. Obviously, uh, some of the things I've done, um, when working with our solicitors on seven four five Dutch Hill property, um, to demolish that property. I actually have to get you some things tonight because I had a conversation with Gary about that. Um, en- engineers are actually working going forward with the demolition for one forty-five Morgan Street. The only thing that's holding us up is there, is there's an asbestos mitigation report that needs done. In order to, the survey to determine how much asbestos is in the property. And that obviously goes into the demolition cost and goes into that. Uh, I had a discussion with the head of the Conservation District about various projects within the township and DEP. Uh, because I just wanted to make sure, I.
Yeah, stop right there, because that's, when I read your report, that's the first thing I wanted to ask you about. I have it right here on my notes. Elaborate on County Conservation District. I'd be curious to hear about your discussion.
There's lots going on, obviously, within the township. And I've heard issues from, from our people that there were consistency issues. I guess I want to, and I wanted to ensure that what was being done. I used to serve on the Conservation District.
Mm-hmm.
So I have some background knowledge of the Conservation District. And I just noticed it seemed like there was a lot of inconsistency in what was being done with our representative versus representatives of other townships or municipalities. So I just wanted to sit down with them and make sure everyone was on the same field as far as that goes, because I don't want to be, anyone to be held to a higher standard if that same standard isn't being implied, uh, being implied across.
Somewhere else in the county, right?
And I wanted to make that crystal clear to them.
Okay.
So, um, that was the main driver of this, just because, like I said, I just noticed that we were being held, it seemed like we were. that we were being held, it seemed like we were being held to a higher standard.
What was the result of the meeting?
It was a good meeting. I think they're going to work on some things. One of the things that actually came up tonight was the, was the Park Ferry Park because we talked about that. And that was obviously, I think both parties could have did better on that process.
Yeah.
It seemed like there was, we could have done better and it seemed like they could have done better. And it seemed like it could have been, if there were better, better communication early on, it seemed like a lot of that problem would have been eliminated. But, I mean, hindsight's twenty twenty at this point in time. Uh, there was just some discussion about obviously the new, uh, Newberry development and everything that's going on down there. And hopefully everything, knock on wood, is going to move forward with that in the near future. So DEP is involved and DEP, I believe, has green lighted a lot of the projects. So I think it's all good news.
Okay. I'm not against county conservation, but I've been hearing way too much from them.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
You got that right. It's gone overboard. We will, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah. That's why I thought it was important, like I said, sit down and have a discussion with them.
Yeah, I'm good with all the other stuff unless anybody else had questions.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Building permits, I think that's also pretty self-explanatory. I mean, we had one big hit last year that we didn't have yet this year.
Correct, yeah. Um, looking back to those big commercial numbers in twenty-four, I, uh, those were related to the, the apartments. Um, so we've been really light on the commercial, um, solid residentially, but, um, still lagging behind where we were last year.
Okay. Andrea, anything for Communications and Community Development?
Thank you, Andrea Egler, Director of Communications and Community Development. Um, the TV channel on Comcast is more fully launched this month than last month. The, um, Commissioner's meeting is now scheduled and running periodically. Um, and next time we have a new, um, Planning Commission meeting and Parks and Rec Board meeting, we'll put those in the mix as well. And I'll have it set up so next time the most recent version of a meeting is available, it will replace the previous one. So it'll always be the most recent one, whatever that may be, you know, even if there's a couple, if there's a month skipped for some reason, the older ones still would play until the newer ones available.
What is that on YouTube?
Um, this is on the TV channel, on the Comcast.
Okay, I was going to ask a question about that because I, I watch TV. I couldn't get it on channel fourteen at my house, right? I went down, this is even today, at the fire department, I put on channel fourteen, told me to go to channel ninety-two, wait three minutes, go back to fourteen and still won't come on. So I don't know if anyone else has had that problem. I just wanted to see what this, what this thing looked like.
Can you use Verizon?
Comcast, it's Comcast.
This is only Comcast.
I pay Comcast three hundred thirty-seven dollars and nineteen cents a month. So I know I have Comcast.
And I will say, I have, I have a visual preview of what it looks like through my, um, software.
Yeah.
Um, without the audio, but I can see that there's an audio signal. Unfortunately, there's an issue in this building right now where we can't get Comcast. We have an issue with cable in this building. So I have not been able to see it on the TV as well. So unfortunately, I don't know.
All right, just asking. I didn't know if we were still like to switch the flip or something. That's on.
Yeah, um, certainly any other feedback, if you hear that people are seeing it or not seeing it or having any issues, it's, it's great to know.
No, I wanted to look today before I came up here. I looked at the web, the YouTube thing. Everything else looks good. So where are the cameras?
Right there.
That's one there.
And one there?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Did we post on our Facebook page that this was live, the channel yet?
Um, not yet. I'm going to, um, most likely announce it in this upcoming magazine, but I was kind of waiting, hoping that I would be able to get a little more testing in before I widely announced it to everybody. And it sounds like there might be a couple glitches, you know, on Comcast and I'm not sure. So, um, but once we've kind of feel a little more confident here or, you know, in the next few weeks, the next magazine comes out early July, um, then, you know, we can maybe make a broader announcement about it. But certainly anyone who has Comcast can go on right now and they should be able to go to fourteen and, and see these things. Um, and in addition to that, the bulletin board that we talked about last month, uh, the meetings, and there's also a couple other of, of videos that are scheduled in playing periodically. Like we did a three-minute highlight video on the Citizens Police Academy. Um, I just put one up on the police bike patrol and we'll probably have one on Community Day. Just kind of, you know, some short videos like that scheduled in as well. And, um, it's been a busy, busy summer for businesses. We've had, you know, several grand openings and we've been working with a chain of attending those and helping to welcome and, and promote those businesses. Um, I also wanted to mention the figures from our last TV and electronics recycling collection. We just got those. It's almost forty-six tons that we collected and we'll be doing another one in September. And I'd be happy to answer questions about anything else you may have.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Jason's not here. Travis, do you have anything for engineering report?
Uh, good evening Commissioners. Um, like you said, uh, Jason's on a cruise ship somewhere in the Caribbean right now.
Oh, there you go.
Nice.
He sent me, uh, most of the stuff I was going to talk about tonight, we already covered the paving program from twenty twenty-five. As we said, they're largely done, just some cleanup work with that. Uh, Mohawk Road, kind of the same thing, just some guide rail to install and some cleanup work on that. Uh, we talked about the Fairview Park. The last thing that I did want to talk about, uh, that we haven't touched on tonight was the, um, South Fayette Township, uh, Collier Township line relocation. Um, so we were, uh, we represent Collier Township, uh, as well as South Fayette Township. Uh, Collier Township approached us, uh, probably about a year and a half ago.
Yeah, I remember.
And I guess somebody applied for a building permit and, uh, they, they went to Collier or South, I think they came to South Fayette and South Fayette says, well, that's in Collier. They went to Collier and Collier said, well, that's in South Fayette. So we looked a little bit closer into it, um, and realized that the, the, the lot, the boundary line actually, uh, ran through some properties, uh, right through the middle of the properties. Um, and I know there's an exhibit up there. I don't know if you guys can see.
It was by that one house at Burdome.
Yes, yes. Um, so they had asked us, uh, to coordinate with South Fayette, um, and kind of put a, a survey together and, and look at what we had to do, um, to kind of get that line moved to a location, uh, which made sense for both parties, um, which is the exhibit you see there. Essentially, all we did was, uh, take the existing, uh, line where it, the Collier South Fayette line where it met at the bridge, um, on the exhibit there, the, the top, uh,
Bridge Street.
And, and it's Tom's Run Road and run it down the center of Tom's Run Road as the new dividing line.
This is the new dividing line.
There is the federal firearms, uh, property that you see there that's kind of parsed out. Um, that's the only little, that's not even a, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to call it a hiccup, but it's, it's parsed out that, that will remain in South Fayette, which is currently in South Fayette. So everything that was in South Fayette will remain in South Fayette. Everything in Collier will remain in Collier. All this does is set the boundary line along Tom's Run Road so that those properties aren't cut off.
Cut in half.
In the middle, so.
Fire fricated.
Um, we're working, uh, you know, obviously with John, uh, the solicitor, uh, to, to kind of get this to the, the, the final, to the finish line here. Um, you know, we have to have a public meeting. Uh, I believe it can be a joint meeting. So I know we've been discussing that with John and, and Gary. Um, so that's got to happen sometime here in the near future. And we've also been told by the solicitor that this can't take effect till the beginning of the year. Um, so public meeting coming up just to discuss this. Again, can be a joint meeting with both parties at a agreed upon location, talk about the line relocation. Doesn't really affect anybody or anything. And then it would become permanent once it's approved, so.
Great.
Great.
And then that's, that's about all I had unless you guys had any questions for us.
I don't.
Thanks Travis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Facilities, Vitaly?
Good evening Commissioners. Uh, we start with electrical. Uh, emergency power generator maintenance agreement. An emergency power generator agreement, three years agreement has been signed with the Penn Power Systems. Under this agreement, the contract will, will program, uh, the unit to operate automatically once per week, ensure its reliability in case of power outages. Uh, this proactive approach will help ensure uninterrupted, uninterrupted power during emergencies. Uh, HVAC system efficiency. HVAC system efficiency, um, with the T, um, there was a key topic at the recent Energy Star Conference hosted by Half Tech in the Grand Bay Township. During this event, innovative strategy and technology were discussed to optimize building white energy use. Uh, this collab, this collab, collaboration aims to ensure HVAC system operates at the peak efficiency, reducing the cost and saving energy while maintaining comfortable indoor environment for all occupants. Uh, monthly cleaning protocols and results. Project update. On June three, twenty twenty-five, Pat myself met the building cleaning contractor to address our disa- disa-
Disappointment.
Yeah, disappointment, yeah, with the cleaning services, um, currently being provided. Um, during that meeting, we emphasized the need of significant improvements and established the new line of communication between the cleaning personnel and township employees. So we have a binder now, uh, we've.
Checklist.
Checklists of the, every, every checklist, well, every point has to be checked. For some reason, that's still not doing it. Um, uh, some excuses after excuses, I, I, we don't, I, I don't know what else.
Did they say why they needed a two-week grace period?
Well, that's, that, at, at our meeting, they asked for two, before we started seeing improvement, they asked for two weeks of, uh.
Why?
Well, that, that's what they asked. We agreed to it, but they given a chance. Uh, first of all, a salesman mentioned, if I don't know what to fix, I don't know how to react. So we, uh, give him exact explanation what needs to be fixed and he was trying to deliver our message to our cleaning personnel. Hopefully that will pick up the slack, but uh, things are getting.
Probably also, I guess, he had, probably has different cleaning people on different days and they're working different hours. So it takes him some time to get to.
Training.
To pass the community, the message, right?
So that's what they, yeah. So anyway, uh, also in, I'm in the process of, um, uh, collecting an estimate from the, uh, from different companies.
Okay.
Uh, special.
Hey Vitaly, just not to go back and belabor, but just a point of explanation, the electrical and the HVAC slide you had, I assume that was for this building here, right?
For this building here.
Perfect, okay.
Yep.
Move on.
Mm-hmm. A special project, uh, restoration partially complete. It's from a fire. Uh, we still have, uh, some landscaping to do. Um, stormwater media installation, a small detention pond repair partially complete. Public works spread, uh, two to four inches of, uh, special media at the larger pond and, uh, special grass seed has been placed. We're waiting to, waiting to come up. Um, building mechanical components setup, work order system, it's still ongoing. Uh, interior win, uh, interior, exterior windows and a frame screening complete as of today. So if you guys can walk around to see the old, old windows and frames are clean.
Lucky it didn't rain.
We are, the local, lo- local company did a wonderful job. Uh, they gave us a very reasonable amount of.
Okay.
Uh, paving program. I just have the, all the little, little details.
Yep.
Per, for each street, how much it costs, uh, in photographs before and after. Uh, as you can see, we are within the budget, actually a slight below the budget. And, uh, we were in a, we are in a contact with a Columbia guest to complete section of the road on a hickory grate and there was one extension. So what should be sometime in July. Commissioners, that's all I have for my report.
I have one question for you. I'm going to tell you what time it happened. It was to do. It was this morning. Folks must know what day we have is Meetings Day, right? And they watched it on YouTube. So just want to clear one thing up. On the, at the end of last month, I brought about Cecil Surgeon and you had mentioned.
Yes.
That every June, July was a target for reclamation and tarantip. Is that on track?
It's, it is on track. I, uh, I saw, we signed the documents, uh, project estimated cost hundred twenty-five thousand roughly. Uh, had a conversation with the company. Uh, right now, estimated starting date, we're anticipating starting date at mid-July.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Uh, no, I always, I get a number that I don't know. I, then I put them in my phone, so.
Any other questions?
We don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paula, Parks and Rec?
Um, unfortunately, my report tonight is verbally. I apologize. I didn't get my report done. I was on vacation. I had a death in the future.
I understand. Don't worry about it.
Um, we have Concert in the Park coming up on June twentieth. That's next Friday in Fairview Park. Um, we have I Can Shine Camp, June twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. We are looking for volunteers if anyone's interested.
Yeah, what was the date again?
Uh, June twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. And it'll be up at the school. We are partnering with the school. Um, we got fourteen campers signed up this year. Um, so that's four more than last year. Um, couple sponsorships, so we're excited to bring that program back. Um, our concession stand at the splash pad has been open now for seventeen days. We brought in one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, and that's with some many rainy cold days. Um, so I'm pretty happy with that, that, that's going. We have great staff. Um, they're doing phenomenal. Um, people are enjoying having someone there to go to, um, putting out reserve sign for the pavilion, having them there to help. So it's nice having actually like staff in the park for some things. Um, so I'll be, I'm having a conversation with baseball about next year after the fields are open because we, we are being successful with having concession stand open. So what's that going to look like next year with ball fields there, baseball? How are we going to have that partnership look? Um, because I never really planned on us operating concession stand, but that's just kind of the way it's happened. We have to have staff there for this, for the splash pad. So I'm going to start having those conversations with them about how that's going to look. Um, I'm working with Gibson Thomas. They're putting numbers together for paving of the Panhandle Trail. We do have a small grant for that, but we're trying to figure out how much we can do and then potentially going out and maybe having some conversations with, um, uh, North Fayette and Oakdale because there is sections of the Panhandle Trail. It kind of goes from South Fayette into those communities back into South Fayette. So we're kind of getting some numbers together with Gibson Thomas and figuring out like, what's the cost for the whole thing? Can we do the whole thing? Can we only do a little bit? It might be weird if we just do our section because it will be paved, not paved, paved, not paved. So we're going to try to, try to figure out how we're going to do that. Um, so any other questions? I'll be happy to answer that.
Thank you. Yeah, I got a quick one.
Oh, go ahead.
So you were saying you were talking to baseball. As far as the three fields.
Yes.
Have they had input or agreed upon like the length of the field?
Yes. Yes, they've had input through the whole process.
That's all worked out? Okay.
Yeah. That's all been worked out. Yeah. So these fields will be as multipurpose as possible. They're me for like age U twelve and under. There'll be, um, uh, no mounds. So mounds can be moved. Um, softball doesn't really use mounds or baseball might have that backwards. Um, but all the different sizes will be used for both baseball, softball, all the markings, they were approved, like they looked at the drawings, know where the hash marks and everything are. Yeah.
All right. So I had a question on the splash pad.
Mm-hmm.
Is that free to anyone?
Yes, it is free to the general public.
All right. Except me, I, of course, story of my life. Get in line, right? Um, no, so I, I question that. Thoughts on, on charging for non-residents for like summer passes? Like non-South Fayette residents? Like I'm just thinking of like Hickory Heights Pool. I paid five hundred and fifty dollars to join it for the summer.
Yeah, it's open, open up to discussion. So half of the.
Because the cost to run it is very expensive, right? So if we're giving up the free to non-residents, I think.
The water is recycled.
Okay.
That's, that's a lot cheaper than if you would go to like Bethel Park. They, their water bills like really expensive. It's like, it's just, you know, goes through. Um, but there is costs associated with it. Um, so it's definitely up for discussion.
Because I've just heard stories of people coming from like Washington PA to go to this.
There are a lot of people coming all over. Yeah, you are correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to look at maybe charging for that, which is more than fair.
Yeah, and this year was a good transition, having staff there, see what it's like to actually have like staff there on site. So now I think it would be an easier transition if we do decide to do that because we already kind of have like the staffs set up. Um, the only other thing is not fenced in. That would be another thing for discussion. Do you fence it in? So you can control it better. So a lot of, you know, a lot of discussions, but definitely open to it. We can.
Yeah, right now you can't have staff walking around asking people where you're from.
Yeah.
Right, so.
It's almost like a check, you have to have a check-in area where they check in. You could, you know, just charge for residents, non-residents, whatever you want to do.
Right, right. I do know we, um, new addition, we did this year, we put a couple chairs around. People are loving that. Just those real basic plastic like, you know, lawn chairs and they're, they're loving that, so.
Add some sand, more beach. Thanks.
Get some grass.
Get some grass.
Sunshine first, you know, supposed to be.
It's coming, hopefully.
Like five days.
Oh, I know. It's crazy.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thanks Paula.
Thank you Paula.
Chief.
Good evening, John Phoenix, Chief of Police. Um, just want to start off, on May twenty-sixth, we had our Memorial Day Parade. There were no major issues there. Everything went off like, uh, it normally does. It was very well attended. It was kind of short this year, but there was no major, uh, issues there. Uh, Sergeant Weslick and Ellie attended their Sergeant Westlick and Ellie attended their annual certifications once again, and they passed and are certified for the next year. She is now in her seventh year with our department, so.
That's 49.
Yeah, 49. Yep. We had 562 calls for service in the month of May. Our officers stopped 294 vehicles. On May 21st, I had a coffee with the chief down at Duncan. We had 10 people in attendance. And the major topic there was the problems with the e-bikes and e-scooters throughout these neighborhoods. It seems to be the summer of e-bikes and e-scooters. And one of my suggestions to the board is if we could maybe look in in the future to having an ordinance added or revised about no e-bikes, no e-scooters on township property. Because I can tell you when Community Day comes and we start to get into anything, you know, concerts in the park, we're going to have e-scooters, e-bikes all through the, the parks. So I don't know if signage in the parks, in order to do that and have township property posted, no e-bikes, no e-scooters.
I see it in other communities as well. I don't think it's pervasive to, you know.
I mean, it's, it has become a real issue. We have kids coming from Fairview down Washington Pike at dusk to go to Sheets on scooters. We have kids from Lakemont going up into the park, passing cars.
Yeah.
I did a blog on it. I spelled out the, the law on it. There's going to be an article in the coming up Pittsburgh Connect Magazine on it. So we're trying to educate and reach out to as many people as we can on the dangers of it because it's a tragedy waiting to happen. So I think to try to get out in front of it and at least have some kind of an ordinance, it's going to be completely up to you with people weaving in and out of traffic in the parks and the public property, so.
But they're not allowed on the street, right? I mean, I see them.
E-scooters are completely illegal on the street. E-bikes have, you have to be 16 to operate it, has to have functional pedals. It can't go faster than 20 miles an hour, 750 watts, proper lighting, obey all the laws of, of the, of the road. And they just don't do it. And it's, you know, we had two kids hanging on the back of a school bus going up Berkshire Boulevard a month ago. So, yeah, and I mean, you're, when you see this and you hear this, we get reports on this, it's going to become a major, major issue. So I just am requesting to the board, that might be something we want to look into.
Can you and I kind of meet offline, just kind of kick around some ideas?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I'd like to understand the situation better. I mean,
Yeah.
I don't have any one of my family's, trust me, that's riding e-bikes. But I, I see them everywhere, right? And they look kind of cool, yeah.
It's the new dirt bikes.
Yeah.
It seems to be, and it's younger and younger kids, seven, eight-year-old kids
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
on these scooters at night, no lighting on it, and they're passing cars, so.
So.
It's, it's dangerous to drive on Washington Pike, let alone.
I hear you. So I'll reach out to you later this week, maybe we set something up for next week.
Okay. Any, any questions? That's all I have.
Do not.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. The home stretch here, Public Works. And you got the long one, right? Make it real short. You take all the time you need.
We'll start in the park. We would, we're catching up with the grass finally. We did receive a new stand-up John Deere mower Monday, which will help out now. A lot of the other mowers, they've been having trouble with. We've been working on them. We fertilized and herbicide and pesticide the fields last week, keeping up on that. We've been keeping up on the cleaning of the parks, the tables and the bathrooms and whatnot. And we also have been working on the building down at Mayview. It's very well underway. We're waiting on for some more trusses to come. Soon as we get them, we'll put them up. Our Todd has been putting signs up in the parks and then on our back roads, weight limits, signs and stuff like that.
Yep.
Sweeping roads since we had the chance. We, we did clean the intersection down on Washington Pike for the parade on, on that Monday. So we got a lot, got a lot of feedback from that.
Good.
Good. Our mechanic's been busy, of course, they're inspection of trucks. We had a few night calls for trees, all in the same place.
A few what?
Trees fall.
Oh.
They've been on the same road.
Okay.
Hopefully, we got all them off. And we've been fixing curbs, putting curb, installing curbs for water control. And a lot of French drains along the roads to pick up the people's pipes and stuff that making water on the roads and ice on the roads. So we've been catching up on that. The latest one we did was on Valley View, which we picked a lot of pipes up going up that stretch. I'm glad we did that part.
Yeah, that was a mess.
And obviously, that goes into help with, you know, stormwater and.
Stormwater, yeah.
Yeah.
Helps us with the roads in the winter times. It doesn't make all that ice.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions?
Any question? Thank you. John, anything jumping out? I looked at request tracker aside from garbage. There was nothing that jumped out of me that I think.
No, just a large number of trash and recycling complaints, but that's standard.
Christine, do you have anything for listeners' report?
I do not.
All right. Open this up for public comment. Does anyone here in the public have comments? Come on up and state your name, address. Well, to be fair, there's only four people here. We've seen this since we came out.
Hi. No, that's okay. Good evening. My name is Mackenzie Schickler. I live at 6080 Spring House Place, right across from Country Meadows off Washington Pike. Yeah, so I've lived here for four years. Also, I hate public speaking, so forgive me if I'm not the most eloquent.
That's okay.
I'm here today to talk about the importance of the library and ask you to expand South Fayette. There's a really big, I feel, common misconception that libraries only offer books. And while, you know, that's a really big part of it, that's not the whole truth. The library offers opportunities for a lot of people who normally wouldn't meet to kind of connect. And I know that connecting is something that's important in South Fayette. And I think if the library was offered more support and more space, and I know I've heard rumbles that there's talk of the library moving. But I think that they would be able to make things even more special. I don't know if you guys have ever been to any of the libraries in the county, but I think of Mount Lebanon specifically. Their library is immaculate and the events they have are amazing. The other part of the building that the library is in has been empty for, I think, the better part of a year. And the library is still shoved in the back corner. It kind of makes me sad. And the community resources, they're super important, but at its core, the library is for books. And I'm someone who reads regularly and I use the library very regularly. And ours simply does not have the room that it should, so I'm here to ask you to show our library some love.
Well, I think you'll be happy.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Because this has been one of the things that since this board's been assembled that we've been trying to address.
Okay.
So we looked at a variety of different options. Where we kind of landed was that kind of pivot. And to your point, we had a building that the township already owned down at 515 Millers Run. So John alluded to it and Mark alluded to it as well. We've been working with an architectural firm. We reviewed their concepts last Friday. I think Ben, you've seen some preliminary plans. The kind of footprint will stay primarily the same of the building. We're going to come out the front a little bit more. They're going to be able to blow out some walls. The library will get more space. They'll have a refreshed look on the facade. There'll be a community room. There's a refresh of the senior room, so that stuff is in the works. So there will be a public meeting for the architects to present their concepts to the public. We encourage you to attend if you'd like to come, Mackenzie, and you can learn more about that. From there, we would assign a general contractor through a bid process. And then hopefully, hopefully, knock on wood, start putting some shovels in the ground, you know, after the first of the year. So we've heard that from yourself as well as other residents. It's being addressed and I say you'll love every little tweet, but I think we took a lot of the feedback from Ben and his board to kind of come to the, the best solution that we could have for what you're asking.
Yeah, in terms of size, we'll probably more than triple.
Okay. Oh, wow.
So that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I walked into this building. I said, this is such a beautiful building. The library deserves something like this.
Yeah, we're working on it. It's gonna, it's gonna happen.
And that has its, its own unique challenges because it was expanded like three or four times.
Right.
So there's some things that, you know, I'm not a contractor that you'd think would be seemingly simple that evidently aren't. So we're kind of working around those, and I think this will be the best solution that we can have for the immediate future to, to address that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Anybody else?
Sue?
Sue? You're good? All right, just checking. All right, anything for board discussion? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.